Okay, new business. Chad and Park Initial Infrastructure Implementation. With a host of different briefers, so Mr. Bruce Beckhoff, our last speaker to kick this off.
And I feel like Johnny Carson or something, so I'm not going to give you a monologue, but I will try to set the table and just supply some housekeeping items of information. You have a few items, excuse me, you have a few items in your packet tonight. And I think I identified those within the memo. But as far as a preamble, what we're looking at this evening is an overview and discussion of some of the infrastructure options that have been discussed with staff in recent, last couple of months. And I think before we, before we at the staff level and in dealing with the developer got too far along, we thought it would be appropriate to at least lay some of those options out for you, so that we get an idea of the technical aspects of the infrastructure, particularly water and wastewater, but also too, some of the financing, ownership, operation, and construction issues that have been discussed or sort of thrown out there as well. And this evening, to help discuss all of those pieces, we have Mr. Tim Baldwin from Kim and Creed, who is working with Preston Development at this initial stage. And he can go over some of the infrastructure concepts. However, as I mentioned, with regard to the ownership, financing, and operation issues, there has been some legal movement in the form of P3, or what are called public-private partnerships. And that's a relatively new construct for the state of North Carolina. And Mr. Jeffries from the Department of Environmental Finance at UNC School of Government is with us this evening to kind of give an overview of some of the state's recent history of public-private partnerships. Now, you'll see, you'll see in the materials that I presented, there was one piece in particular that involved a... indulge me for a second. Okay, there was a flow chart that laid out some, I guess, I don't want to say permutations, but some options as far as, for example, with the new sewer treatment facility, how the new sewer treatment facility would operate and be owned if it were initially given a private build and finance. And you can see that it ranges on one side from private operation of the plant all the way down to a complete, a complete private-private, to sort of a hybrid model where the private, it would be built private, private operation initially, and then having some agreement in place to eventually sell services to the town. And you can see where that would, that would operate along these lines over here as well, where eventually the town could, whereas it might be, it might be initially a public-private partnership or a private partnership initially, that the town would enter or engage into an agreement probably at the development level for eventual town ownership and operation of the utilities. And so this is kind of, this is kind of the magic that has to happen after this in terms of being able to, you know, first of all, identify, as Mr. Baldwin will talk about, some of the technologies, but then get into a discussion of how we would go about actually bringing forward from an operational ownership standpoint later. And I think at this point in time, I would turn it over to Mr. Baldwin, and we would start looking at some of, some of the options, particularly from a geographic standpoint, because with 7,000 acres, obviously, they're different. There are different delivery models that have to be put into effect. And there's just a lot to talk about. In summary, our purpose this evening would be to kind of introduce some of those, some of those options and some of those operations, get some reaction, ask some questions, and then, and then try to get a feel for you guys whether or not we're on the right track and how we might progress this. Mr. Baldwin, if you'd like to take that out. I don't know which piece you'd like to operate from first, probably the map.
Yeah, I'm thinking the map. I don't think I need to be memo.
The memo is fairly short, I think, to the point, as far as different things that have been discussed. And so you have that in your packet, but the map, does it graphic field or what's happening in there?
Yeah, I only got, I'm probably just been fighting cold wind coughs, so I brought this up in case I start parking, so you don't have to call animal control. Hopefully, I'll get through. And really, there have been a lot of different possibilities that have been considered. And really, what the memo shows is what, you know, our collective or the combination of unilateral and collective staff has been, is what might make sense initially. There's really nothing carved in stone. There's, you know, nothing that's completely prejudiced and decided. And so as I go through this, I'll, you know, talk about some of that as well. And obviously, Jeff's going to follow me with some discussion that could influence that as well. So let me separate between water and wastewater. It's an easy divide, and the water system is a little more straightforward. As we've discussed before, the premise had always been basically to provide water service from the town as a normal sort of development project, where there'd be, you know, certain facilities constructed by the developer turned over to the town to operate. Some of those might be subject to some form of reimbursement through credits on impact fees or whatnot. But what drives it is, to drive some of the major facilities, is that the higher ground on this development up in the North Village, particularly north of the bypass, is that an elevation that your, even your highest pressure zone right now can't adequately service. Your tallest tanks are at 679, and that would result in low pressures throughout much of the North Village area. And so a new pressure zone at an elevation of at least 710 would need to be created, which translates to a new tank with an overflow elevation set at at least 710. So, you know, our initial plans for that, you know, in a vacuum, would be to come off, and just so you're oriented, you know, you've got 15501 here, and the bypass here, and the new interchange. So would be to have a booster station coming off the main supply line from the water plant here that tracks up 15501, and then that would be located somewhere in this neighborhood, and feed this new pressure zone, which is sort of outlined generally by the blue. Now, that's following a contour. Obviously, that's going to shift a little bit based on where roadways and houses and such are. But in general, that's the area that would be served by that, that new pressure zone. With a tank to be located in the Village Center area, somewhere just north of the new interchange, as a sort of concentration of demand, particularly with the hospitals, which one of the hospitals coming. And that's also about the highest ground as well in that, in that area. Now, since that time, we've had a number of conversations with your staff, with Fred and John, and Mr. Bruce Beck. And we're working on some other possibilities and options that might be a better win-win for everybody, that might resolve in a somewhat taller zone, that part of the existing town system could be converted over into and eliminate some of the low-pressure problems you may have in certain areas. It might allow for the abandonment of that existing standpipe, which has been a little troublesome at times in terms of its ability to maintain pressure adequately. It might mean being able to do away with this booster station and instead upgrading the finished water pumps at the water plant, sort of kill two birds with one stone, and be able to just utilize those to feed that new system. So there's a few more options we've discussed several times, and will be in the next week or two, and you'll probably hear more about that possibly at your next meeting. And so there may be an option that works better for both the town and equally well for the development.
And on that, you're talking about, you're talking about the pressure issue on the north side, as far as the water distribution system is concerned.
Right. There are some areas now that experience low pressure, especially when the standpipe draws down, which tends to do under high-demand situations. So again, there are some collaborative options under discussion right now. I guess we'll move to wastewater now. Do questions any time you want, or we can go through it and then do questions however we want to do this. Just take your direction.
I have one question. Mr. Baldwin, you said something about this new interchange right here. Is this not the intersection, the interchange where the elevated water tank is? Is that not the interchange down there at 64, just as you come into town? That's a new one.
This beyond the bypass, this north of the bypass, where the new bridge would be.
Okay, where the tank will be, where the proposed bridge.
Right.
Okay.
Although again, part of the discussion might involve citing the tank back over near your existing standpipe, and the, yeah, tank, which is some of the higher ground in the area, down somewhere between Fire Tower Road and 15501, existing tanks are.
I think if I, maybe the first time we saw this map, this was the tank that was, this was the tank that was discussed or proposed, correct? And I think that, I think that in subsequent conversations, we identified a common pressure problem, and thus an opportunity for a common tank. And that's the conversation that took place even as late as today. So this tank right here may be located in a different spot.
Yeah.
Your existing tanks are down here, Fire Tower Road along in here, some of the highest grounds that exist. And so a tank located somewhere over there might, again, solve some of your problems and still be able to, to be connected back into the general park development and serve that as well.
So the existing tank is right at the top of, bring the arrow down, and you're right on, you're right on that, right there, you're right.
Standpipe right.
Yeah. It's right there. Interestingly, your circuitous line that connects all this, it terminates pretty close to.
Yeah, it gets a little weird in here, and then debatable how you do the pressure zones and where you do the cutoffs and that type of thing. So south of the bypass, it's a little less determinate, more flexible. But yeah, there could be an opportunity to cite that there, and even abandon the standpipe. And, you know, it just means that, you know, the connecting piping back in either up this way or down this way would have to be done to have that flow routed. That's essentially what the pumps, plant does now, is pump to that system. So it'd be a matter of doing what needs to be done to improve those pumps to work against a somewhat higher pressure.
Is there a plan of a elevated tank here, work behind the lunge?
Uh, no.
No.
Okay.
What we, what we'd be doing here would be solving a low-pressure situation that occurs right in that area, so.
Yeah, I mean, part of the driver for over here was the thought that we would start with a smaller tank, so that we didn't have so much water in the air for so long, and have water quality degradation problems from the age of water. And then when the growth was sufficient, the demand was sufficient, repurpose that to be a reclaimed water storage tank, to feed the reclaim system, and then build an even larger unified potable tank, again, either there or over here. But given some of your more pressing needs immediately, then it might make sense to rethink that and go ahead and start with a tank that serves both systems, and deal with a reclaimed tank later. Make sense? Okay. Shifting to wastewater then. And again, this is sort of a snapshot of what we think could make sense in the initial stages. There are all kinds of other possibilities and options. But right now, you obviously have service up into this area with school and the learning center, and it has some amount of capacity. There are some restrictions as you get into town that are being looked at and potentially mediated. So, you know, our thought and plan would be to continue to have this area come to the town through the town system and to the town's plant. And again, a fairly normal developer transaction, whatever, you know, fees and facilities exchange would be done, and continue to do that until and unless you either couldn't accept anymore or chose not to for other reasons, you know, at which point any additional flow would be shunted across into the main part of the development here, into the Village Center, to be treated, you know, however this area is being treated, what you get to. You know, currently, there's about 100,000 gallons of capacity physically right now. There's paper capacity allocation issues to resolve and such. But again, while you have some capacity and are planning for additional in your plant, you know, if this is attractive as a flow and revenue source, to better utilize that, you know, consider doing that, since it's already basically connected, and then just deal with some limited improvements as they're needed. The bulk of the development here in the north area, north of business 64, what we looked at, and previously, we talked about maybe even a more decentralized version, but this version has now essentially two treatment facilities. One smaller one in the North Village area that is, at least right now, planned to be sort of a, an example, a demonstration, a, you know, an example of how sustainable can a treatment facility be, something that, that is a very compact footprint, a very compact energy signature and carbon footprint, something that's shown as very sustainable, something that generates 100% reclaimed quality water, and all that water is to be used as reclaimed water in the north area, no discharge. Starting out at about 100,000 gallons per day, perhaps expand it to 200,000, probably not growing huge. It could get bigger, but, but again, that's designed mainly to be both a sustainability beacon, as well as to provide reclaimed water largely, you know, major user would be the hospital, once they came in with the cooling towers and energy systems that they have, they could use all of that water at that point, let alone what else could be used for, you know, greenways, irrigation, and toilet flushing, and all that kind of stuff. But for the bulk of the flow, it was planned to create a second subregional plant down here, sort of in the business bypass 64 gap, if you will, sort of on the eastern end of town, and to begin at roughly half a million gallons per day, and to go ahead and build that portion of the new outfall sewer that would be required to get to the river. And so part of this would be reclaimed water back into the development, and if there was excess, to utilize a portion of that discharge capacity and to get a portion of that line in place and usable both by, you know, the town and, and the park. Now, where it goes from there is a large question in terms of the expansion. It could be expanded. There could be other regional options that materialize with adjoining municipalities. There could be collaborative options that materialize with the town. So again, we talked early on about the plan needing to be as adaptable and as flexible as possible to both phase the facilities as closely as possible to demand for them, to avoid stranding large amounts of capital, and to provide the ability to shift with changing regulations and emerging technologies to make the best advantage of those things at the time when the need develops. So that's why I started out at modest sizes right now, to allow for those things to happen. How far would I go with other things we've looked at, or questions right now? Stop and see if there's any questions about that so far.
What do you envision the reclaimed water use to be prior to arrival of the hospital?
Well, frankly, use all of that for growing purposes, let alone stable irrigation on greenways, park areas, and all that kinds of things that would be set up and designated ahead of time. The 100,000, 200,000 gallons a day can all be gotten rid of, frankly, can all be gotten rid of without the hospital or with the hospital, either or.
Are there large storage facilities required for periods of time when you can't discharge?
With the amount of area that's available or necessary to be irrigated, no.
Okay.
It doesn't look like there'd be much at all.
But that would require a lot of infrastructure to get to all those areas.
Yeah, so it would require going ahead and getting that in place ahead of time. Or conversely, we could flip the other way and say, let's find a dedicated site here as a sacrificial temporary access disposal area, which would be more economical to build initially, but it would be sacrificial and be abandoned at some point down the road. Again, that's a little level of detail that we really haven't gotten to yet.
When you're using it for irrigation, it doesn't need to be in a cleared area?
No.
Yeah, so you can spray it into the woods?
We've done it in silviculture sites where it's a tree plantation. We've done it in natural vegetation. We've done it on cleared areas, athletic fields, lawns, you know. Yeah, there's just different ways to do it, depending on what the receiver site looks like.
Right. But to do a sacrificial site wouldn't require clearing of the trees to do so?
No, if it were going to be a maintained site for a long term, you want to provide an avenue to get to the lines, whether there's sprayheads or drip facilities for, you know, routine maintenance and checking to make sure they haven't, you know, ruptured or anything like that. So there's, there's some amount of incidental, depending on how, you know, overgrown the area is, or, you know, some places that were planted as plantation are perfectly fine just the way they are. Other natural areas require a little bit of understory thing, but obviously, you're not, they're trying not to take out big trees. That's, that's providing most of your uptake.
Right.
As far as, and again, the, we're going to have much more discussion about ownership, financing, options here following the, what you'll see in the memo was some supposition that, A, the town would want to remain in the retail business for both water and wastewater facilities and reclaimed water. So we took that as a given. There are other possibilities if you'd like to move that way. And that also, for the time being, and for the purpose of financing and construction, that bringing in a third party to do the finance, build, and initial operation at least would make sense for both parties, given where, where you are with what else is on your plate, as well as where the funding would be or need to be coming from. Under that scenario, that was that hybrid scenario that Mr. Bruce Beck had on his chart that, you know, trended over here and then down this leg, where essentially, the town is the only customer of that entity, and they're selling wastewater treatment services and reclaimed water production back to you for then your resale to your constituents and the residents. And there'd be some type of a turnover date, buyout date, that's exercised or not by you, as you choose to, where it could become public facilities and under your wing, or you could leave it the way it is. That's only one of a myriad of different ways it could be done, of course, and obviously, nothing is settled yet.
Can we see the more southerly piece of the map there? Can you push that up a little? Okay.
Yeah, we haven't really gone, I mean, this is so far out in the future down here for the last southern part of the development, that again, so many things change in 20 years or 25 years, that, that really isn't specifically defined right now, whether that's another, another plant, whether it's 100% reuse, whether there's a regional opportunity before that.
Well, I just want to make the observation that, two things. Number one, we just approved tonight the beginning of an engineering study with Erie on this big star on the bottom there.
Right.
And so options around that plan would be forthcoming in nine months to a year. And we will definitely want to know what the Erie Engineering reports will look by a long-range plan.
Right.
And the other observation I'd make is that our existing wastewater collection system looks like it reaches out to a point almost within walking distance of your other star there. And it seems like there, yeah, so it seems like there would be, you know, if you're running a line to the, if you're, suppose you're running a, a little line to the, to the, there.
Yeah, this would.
Yeah, just be cognizant of the fact that the Erie report may think that that line ought to go all the way back to the other star as well.
Yeah, I mean, at some point, depending on, obviously, you've gotten permission to discharge more to Robeson Creek right there.
Yeah.
But then above that, you know, anything would have to get to the river or be reused, correct? Yeah, your, your systems out in here are pretty, pretty small, so you get somewhere near here, you get some bigger interceptors in place to move flow that way. But yes, this, at the very least, this would be a leg that would be done and over with, and then just, you know, connector that needs to come in. We've also talked about the possibility of collaboratively doing something over here at the Townsend Facility, which is closer to your plant, and might provide some opportunities. There's an existing permit, lagoon, spray field, some things that perhaps could be done over there, that would make sense for both parties as well.
The permitting is still in place at the Townsend Facility. And for what capacity is that?
Well, it's, they have a flow capacity, but it's largely nutrient-limited and such, so you probably, you know, depending on how you look at it, it's either 80,000 gallons a day or almost 400,000 gallons a day, depending on the level of pre-treatment. One of the things we looked at for over there, as you may recall, maybe at one of the public meetings we had last year, one of the technologies we're looking at again along the sustainability line were those things we called energy ponds, which were an energy-positive treatment plant that make more energy than they use, but they require a very large footprint. That's the only downside. They're really simple to operate, generate high-quality water, three different revenue streams, but they need a big footprint. Townsend Facility would be a great location for that. There's a lot of land over there. It's not really being used for much else. There's a lagoon right there that could be converted into some of these things. So again, as a collaborative thing, that might make some sense for, at least for phase two, perhaps. And they like food, so in theory, you could send all your biosalads over there to feed those ponds, get that off your current site, and then expand your current site more for forward-flow, liquid flow, and not just the solids at your current site. There's a plethora of possibilities to talk about, but, you know, this would sort of get a start that wouldn't paint anybody very far into a, into a path that's incontrovertible later, or changeable later, but it gets things started on a fairly progressive timeline that the rest of the development's on.
So, yeah, depending on, depending on the infrastructure and where it's, that's going to kind of hardly, in the phase of it, is going to hardly dictate how we finance it and to a certain extent, how we go about eventually, or, you know, or the possibility exists that we could allow a third party to own and operate it as well. Again, as Mr. Baldwin indicated, I was operating for, on the assumption that the town needs to retain as much control as it, as it possibly can, yet at the same time minimizing the risk that it would assume in terms of financing it and, to a certain extent, operating it. I think in some cases, depending on how the development would phase in, and depending on how significant the infrastructure would be, we would be hard-pressed from a staffing perspective, if this were to happen tomorrow, obviously, to be able to operate certainly much more of the facilities that you see identified on the map. And so that's why, from the standpoint of being able or having the option to look at some third-party operation with the possibility for eventual town ownership and operation, I think is something that we all might want to at least talk about at some point in time.
But the important thing is, is I think that we're looking at this from the standpoint of public cooperation and that we're willing to hear what the developer has to say and that the developer is also willing to hear what the town can tolerate in terms of rescue and work mode. Also too, as you guys, as the board has indicated in previous meetings, we need to be mindful of being able to collaborate with other communities, not just from the private perspective as well. And I think we do have things, as you're aware, we do have things moving forward in the collaboration front as well, certainly in the form of the Jordan Lake Partnership. There probably are other authority possibilities for wastewater treatment heading south. We haven't really gotten into those much tonight. It's probably been premature to do that just because we just, you know, we want to try to identify what we need to do in our backyard first and then see what other capacity we might have to identify in terms of other, you know, cooperating with other authorities and so forth, particularly in the wastewater front. So in other words, how much of that wastewater on the southern front, so to speak, would we need to be able to handle cooperatively with other entities? So that's a conversation that we're probably may have to have sooner than later as well. But again, we asked Mr. Hughes here tonight to kind of provide an overview of what the state has encountered as far as its public-private partnerships and, you know, what they've encountered. Maybe, you know, some viewpoint, vantage point too, as far as what we're seeing here locally and how this might fit in. And again, I'd preface all of this by saying this is an introductory conversation that, as you can obviously tell, the more we talk about it, the more complicated it can get. And so I think there's going to be a number of different solutions in different areas, depending on phasing, depending on each other's ability to handle it. So we're not going to have the mother of all agreements or the mother of all facilities that this spins out of, this spins out of Chad and Park or any other future development. Not just as tonight, we're not going to have, you know, Erie's not going to bang and gavel. We're not going to necessarily go forward in one particular course of action. But the idea tonight is to try to familiar with some of the things that we're talking about and how we would be able to handle it. Maybe Mr. Hughes can help us understand that.
Before Mr. Hughes started, I just want to make an observation on one of the models here calls for a third party owner-operator to finance and build the facilities and the town would continue to be the retailer. That concept is intriguing to me because I think it's no secret that we struggle with rate setting around here and the ability to separate at a point where they're paying for the actual cost of production of these services. If we become the consumer of bulk wastewater services from a private entity, that they would set that rate.
Correct.
Then we would have to turn around and set a rate to the customer that would cover that cost probably plus up for some overhead and deal with our own internal overhead costs.
Right.
And it'd be very interesting to know the mathematics of that and see if economies of scale that we gain by working through a model like that would actually result in a rate reduction rather than a rate increase. That mathematics is interesting to me. And it was premature. You can't provide those mathematics tonight, but that's-
Yeah, we are actually commissioning a plant right now at Emery that's doing that very thing. Essentially have a water purchase agreement with a third party. And then there's a turnover date. Capital is, excuse me, capital is retired or buyout before that, or they can let it go for the full twenty-year term, their discretion. So that'd be something to talk about.
Good to see everyone tonight. It's been a long time since I've been at this for talking about about water and sewer in front of my hockey board. This is the Chad County Public Works Director because I'm having a very interesting discussion here. But I got asked, I got asked tonight to just go through some of the public-private partnership models that you have at your disposal legally and then to try to intersperse with that some of the examples and experiences that we've had in dealing with local governments across the state, either with different options that you have in front of you or with options that have a number of similar characteristics. I also put together just a list of some general criteria which could be also explained as the things that I hear people complaining about later, after they enter an agreement. So this is just a one way of looking at kind of the questions that you would ask. There's a mix. If you want to go forward, go to the next slide. I just put these in if you need to go back to those. So I was going to, again, start with just some of the criteria, go through some of your legal options and then open it up for questions to the next slide. This is straight out of a memo that Mr. Creed gave you and I, always as good as any definition of what a lot of developers will do when they come to an area in North Carolina or nationally, for that matter, where the developer will come in with their contractors. They'll put the infrastructure in and then basically hand it over to you to do that. And they do that for a number of reasons and that system works for a number of reasons. One of them is the procurement is fairly straightforward. Developer can actually use their procurement to actually build the infrastructure to your specs hopefully. But the procurement is part of the reason why this is a traditional model. When the assets get bigger and bigger, you tend to see it a little, a lot more complicated. And when they actually get to the treatment plant facility, this is not necessarily the traditional model. We don't see that many developers building, certainly the facility that you're looking in the southern area. The facility that you're looking in the northern area, we do see some situations where they might follow the traditional model of a package plant or something like that. But this tends to be, work really well for lines within private property that gets handed over. But when you're talking about the magnitude, you really are looking at probably some alternative. Let's go to the next one. So just so we know, it's very complicated, these systems and these agreements. Thanks. There is every flavor of partnership out there in North Carolina and across the country. And it's really a mix of the components of a water wastewater system and the activities. And you can mix and match in a lot of different ways. I don't want to confuse you, but we could probably have thirty options that had all these different ways of mixing these two together. But I like to look at it as, in order to serve your public, you're going to actually have the treatment facilities. And I did it for water and wastewater because they're very synonymous. But have a wastewater treatment plant or a water treatment plant. Then you have to get, let's just take from wastewater, in order to receive the waste, you're going to have, and I think, I think Mr. Baldwin mentioned this concept of the interceptor. You're going to have these big collection systems that are really community assets that they serve multiple subdivisions, multiple neighborhoods. So you're going to have that feeding right into the wastewater treatment plant. But then feeding into those are going to be a whole network of local lines and newly created development. And the reason to think about these separately is you might, you know, you might very well want to maintain that traditional approach for things like the local lines or the lines around the road at the hospital or some of the residential subdivision. And then the last component, which is from the customer standpoint, is who's actually sending the bill. So it's not really a physical asset, but it's a pretty important component of water utility. It also influences how you are regulating, whether you own that or a private sector or not. So all of those assets can have a mixture of public-private involvement. The key activities, I think, that local governments are very concerned about is financing. Who's going to actually write the check? So you got to figure out, it's financing design, it's financing construction. You don't necessarily have to always finance it own. You can split those activities up. So you can, a local government can be involved in some of the financing, but the asset could actually be in part owned or a majority owned by a private organization or could be reverse. Operating the asset is again, another activity that either the public or the private could do. And then financing expansion, sometimes we only see a public or private partnership kick in when the assets are expanding. And then that last one, I have a number of slides that have the word "risk" on it and I think it's already come up with risk. The thing I can't stress enough is there is a definite cost-risk connection. So with a lot of these things, if you want to have absolutely no financial risk of any kind at all in the future, then your current cost is going to be skyrocketing. I mean, there's going to be pricing for your risk aversion. So this will be more clear as I give you some more examples. The fact that risk costs is, a lot of people think that we won't get involved and we're making our private partner or another local government partner pay all of our risk. And you'd be surprised, it usually, risk flows downhill. It usually comes back in another way and you pay for that risk. So a lot of your hard decisions will be figuring out what is the acceptable risk. And I'll get very specific examples of risk in a minute, so end this a little bit and then we'll strike out. So again, the things that I hear local governments worried about and the things that can vary with some of these different options. Environmental impact, we have a good set of wastewater regulation in the state. So I'd like to think that public-private ownership, not going to matter so much for the environmental impact. Probably more important is if you want to get to some of the sustainability, I would say beyond compliance kind of environmental achievements in this particular area. That might be one of your criteria, is that one option may lead itself to being able to be done to tap into some expertise or some sophisticated new brands of treatment that another option may not be able to do. Certainly the kind of facility that they're describing, there's a lot of contractors that can build a basic facility. When you start talking about just what they're talking about doing, it's going to be a smaller pool of people that can actually do it. So you can see how that's going to be impacted. And I'm not going to talk a lot about marketing beyond that. I think what most local governments are concerned about are costs, but I do think that it's not a simple question of costs or rates because there's a lot of trade-offs. You will have an opportunity to either make or reduce or increase an upfront cost. And sometimes that can be done by, then later on, you pay more upfront, but then you reduce your ongoing fixed costs. These are the three kinds of costs that I see most local governments worrying most about is obviously the upfront cost, you're pulling it from your fund balance. Are you taking your own funds upfront? You have to buy into a capacity. It's like a car payment and how much you have to pay and come down. But these other two can be really important. There are a lot of these contracts with private entities where you pay a minimum purchase requirement, which is really a, it seems like it's a volumetric cost, but we have a lot of examples in the water wastewater industry where growth doesn't correlate as expected and that minimum payment, that minimum sales ends up to be a pretty important cost driver for the local government. And I can imagine an area where serving potential growth, it could go in a lot of different ways. Could take a shorter or a longer period of time. You're going to have to bear all these different costs. The cost to customers, hopefully, that's a major concern. The cost to the non-customer, in many areas where there's a project that serves a particular portion of the city, you get a lot of questions about, concern that somebody on the other side of town doesn't pay too much or they might pay a little because in the long run, this new project benefits them by lowering rates. So we do see that as a discussion. Some folks want to draw a complete boundary, you know, and just go, okay, we want to guarantee that anybody living over on this town is not impacted positive or negative benign by this project. So there are different models that will get you that. So if you just wrap this, all these facility in the way in your utility and it's just being a big part of utility, obviously what you're doing, in a good way, you're pooling the costs among, I think what you were maybe starting to talk about in the period. You're pooling the costs around this larger area. Maybe you can drop costs for everyone, but it also could raise costs for everyone. So a lot of folks will have a lot of debates about what's with the non-customer city businesses. I mean, non-customer, non-customer of the new development. Then control comes up awful lot. It's a one-two race between cost or control. You know, the concerns of these arrangements. In some cases, it's not just what the rates are, but it's the ability to control the rates. You've seen examples of rates starting out at a good spot and then the agreement maybe didn't provide the level of control that the local government thought it would. And after a period of years, suddenly they have constituents complaining about the escalation of rates in a way that they didn't expect them to do. Allocation of capacity, I think I was just here about a month ago and you had a very long debate about how you allocated capacity. It's one thing when you own the capacity. It's another thing if you potentially own in a partnership agreement and you have to understand how you're going to work with that partner. It might be their asset, but you can take steps so that you would have shared responsibility for allocating that capacity, but it has to be done very intentionally. So that comes up a lot. Whether or not to expand a facility, again, it's something a lot easier if it's one hundred percent public. To have others to expand it, it's one decision. I meant to say, the use control, the service control of this, I think I lost the word there. The idea here was water and wastewater are essential for guiding growth. They're a big part of a lot of people's growth plans. Growth can either stop or start if there's not water or wastewater service. So having service area agreements with potential private partners or having agreements about areas that you might be able to serve or certain types of use that you might want. You might want to promote economic development industry with water or wastewater capacity. If that hasn't been discussed in an agreement, someone who's a wholesaler might just want to sell more water and wastewater service. So you can see how that can come up. And these other ones are probably important to you, but they're very important to the developer or anyone on the other side. It's the time to construct these facilities. You know, I know, again, timeline is going to be incredibly important. And cost to developer, that, I think time is a cost to developer. I don't want to pretend to speak on behalf of developers, but depending now, the presentations I've seen and been partnered with, you know, you're going to end up hearing a lot about in your option if it's taking too long or taking too little, that will add more cost or less cost. And then the risk related to all of above, again, a slide just relates to risk. Some of these things can be set in ways that are risk-free. And other things carry a certain amount of risk, particularly some of the trade-offs that you'll see in these agreements between upfront costs and recurring volume metric costs. And this isn't a case just with private-public partnerships, but there are many, many examples down in the state of public-public partnerships that are in peril because of capacity that didn't come. Basically, excess capacity, a number of places in the state where one partner has excess capacity and there's disagreements about who should pay for that unused capacity. And there were sweetheart deals, you know, in quotation marks, given because there was this hope of more growth coming. When the growth didn't come, suddenly there are debt service payments that have to be made. And there's a couple lawsuits right now between partners about how to deal with that. And it's just related to this risk and who is going to take the risk of these type of scenarios.
I have a question about this. It's like another risk is what happens if the private company goes bankrupt or something? What happens to the town and the companies?
Well, you probably can map that to some of these costs, but that is going to be definite, that liability issue. I mean, there are ways of dealing with that, but there are certainly many examples of, in smaller scale, along the coast of packaged- in smaller scale, along the coast, of packaged plants that were owned by a developer to do a small neighborhood, a small coastal neighborhood, and might have been transferred over to a smaller operator. And there's been a couple, I'm not sure if I have a seat, but I've gotten a number of calls from local governments along the coast that had to take over these small packaged plants because the operator, the private operator just got in under their head. They don't have to go bankrupt, but they start sending out bills for $300 to their residents, they may as well go bankrupt for the male headaches that the local government board has, if that makes sense. So these are the models and different options that, we could go up to 20 of these easily, but these are ones that I see the most of across the state. And there's a few in here that I don't see very many of them across the state because I think, as Chris mentioned, we have some new legal authority in North Carolina, so that's one of the reasons why we don't see a few of these models. But the one at the top, we see quite a bit. And I think it was, it was mentioned, it was mentioned in the memo, I think, that's just an option, so I wanted to include it. And that's the regulated utility owned and operated with sales directly to the customer. And that's the local government that decides not to be in the water/wastewater business. And you have that right with any of those map areas to say, no thank you. There is not a law in North Carolina law for the city to provide water/wastewater services. You can just say, no thank you. But what would happen in, by default, would be the developers are going to want someone to run a utility. There are a number of reputable utilities in North Carolina that make their business by going out and building, owning facilities, running lines, installing meters, sending bills out, the whole shebang. So that is certainly an option. So you can start to see, if you go back to that criteria, you just knocked out a lot of criteria off the list, right? The whole cost to you, all of that stuff's gone, but on the right side, what makes this so confusing is the control, some of the other things are very difficult. Even the control of rates, once under that one option, number one option, is that you will no longer, the board, have control over the water and sewer rates, that will become a North Carolina utility commission responsibility. You'll still get the, again, angry calls, but you would not actually be able to impact the rates. I mean, there might be some lethal remedies to that, but that's not, you know, that does occur too. That option is pretty basic. I think you have, if I'm not mistaken, you have a few small private water systems operate either close proximity to your system.
Yeah, we have one that, in fact, we're the sponsor of the water system.
So that, I mean, we do have situations where, in North Carolina, most of these are small. There's not a lot that have large, three million gallon, big facility type. So that would be a large, much smaller, they run small well systems, they run small packaged plants on the wastewater side. You guys might work for somebody, don't know how big that they get, but they generally don't get really large. There are other states that have, number one, serving cities and towns. We just, in North Carolina, we don't have a culture of really large municipal systems compared to in some other states. Water systems that are small.
Do you ever have companies that instead have a monopoly that is open, that you can have more than one competing for a customer, you know, that is regulated, that's not possible?
Yeah, the way, and I'm not by any means an expert on utility commission regulation, but you are, you will get a certificate for a service there. And I don't think the utility commission, in fact, I know the utility commission is not going to allow multiple utilities to run water lines, because one of the principles of regulation is to prevent that kind of, you know, multiple destruction. Their view of keeping your rates low is, you know, a pretty complicated accounting-oriented rate setting process where they allow for a rate of return on investors, you know, that's anywhere from 80% to 12%. So in theory, there wouldn't be gouging.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, in theory, our way of regulating utilities is to not, you know, open market, but more of a close review of their finances. So they would be allowed a fair rate of return. There's a lot of debates, you know, across the country whether that rate of return, when you add taxes and the cost of capital and the profit, how that compares to local government providing services. And I don't think, you know, it's the same, you can find examples of utilities, private utilities charging more than government utilities, you can find plenty of examples of government utilities charging more than these, I'll use the term regulated. So I don't know how serious you are about that being an option here, but I think that's a lot of what I wanted to say about that one. The next one is the one that I think was, I think the words were preferred approach in that model. It's a private utility with a wholly owned treatments facility with a wholesale contract. So it's still private, but there's a big difference between private and regulated. Private is just not a governmental own, but you can have private facilities in North Carolina that meet certain, or don't meet certain threshold, and the utility commission never gets involved. And so under the model that they have, you know, I'm not a utility commission expert, but from what I can tell, you know, a private utility serving one customer on a wholesale basis, you would not fit into being regulated by the utility commission in any way. So it would just be still an issue between you and the facility. You could imagine it taking shape in a lot of different forms, you know, that you could start from now negotiating, or someone could come in and say they want to, in that case, you might have two or three examples of, you know, build a wastewater treatment plant here, or here, or here, and we'll take our wastewater that ever offers us the cheaper price. I wouldn't advise that brand of competition, and you'd end up with a bunch of wastewater plants. But you can do virtual ways of that to try and get competition. But that, that way, we do have that model in certain spaces in North Carolina. The private ownership of an asset that serves primarily a governmental body is not that common either in North Carolina and the waterside. Probably the best examples are, some of our military bases are starting to move into this direction in North Carolina and across the country, where a base will decide, we don't want to run our treatment facility. And North Carolina has some really interesting contracts at some of the bases. Some of them are these really long-term leases where it almost looks like private ownership. But among, among local governments, I'm trying to think of some models where it's a private utility, like you, and I know they must exist, but again, to have lots of examples where you can call lots of colleagues across the state, you get their opinions, I don't have it, I'll keep looking. But what I can say is that model dominates many areas of the state, although you just, you switch private utility with another governmental utility. Because that's really what you're talking about for a lot of negotiation and relationship issues. Basically, somebody else owns the treatment side, and that is random. That, but the other person, or the other group across the state, is usually another local government. So there's lots and lots of examples of one local government negotiating a contract to send all of their wastewater to another local government. And I can give you lots of those examples of contracts. And if we get back to that criteria, all those criteria apply, and there are, again, some lawsuits with those agreements. There are issues of controls with those agreements. So I think you have a lot of insight into option two if you go that way, it's just, you won't necessarily have the experience of dealing with a private entity. For example, we can get you lots of wholesale prices of wastewater treatment. There's many, many local governments that pay a wholesale thing gallons per, the price per thousand gallons. My guess is it's between $2 and 12, $13 a thousand, per thousand gallon. I don't know what your current sewer bill is, your retail sewer bill.
I don't know, it's about $6.
So I, so I, if it's around $6, that's retail, so, you know, there are examples of everything as low as $2 all the way up to, there were people paying retail, excuse me, there are people paying wholesale, local governments paying wholesale. Who could have, what I think Mr. Baldwin mentioned was, you could have this option two that then is handed over to a local government. But I will say, that handing over under option two was more difficult in North Carolina for local governments than in other states with local governments, and in North Carolina with some other entities like military bases, universities. We haven't had a lot of legal authority to do really creative handoffs. We can do it, but that may be one of the reasons why we don't see a lot of these, is that our procurement are kind of bulky in this particular area. So, you know, you may have some, I think you mentioned Emory, you might have some other models that may or may not work based on kind of North Carolina statutes and the fact that you're a local government. So we have to look through there. But I know there are these options below that are fairly exciting, that are just out of the gates. So again, I don't have a lot of examples for them, but I think it's a really interesting thing for you to at least be aware of this new authority. And that was why I was going to just show you a few slides on that new authority, and I would take any questions about that.
One question about the handoff. I think every day in North Carolina, developers are building water and sewer lines and dedicating them back to city ownership, town ownership. What's the difference between the plant and the line?
Well, so, one difference is, most of those dedications are completely, they pay all of their cash, all of their money, and they just give it to you wrapped in a bag. And you may not feel that way 10, 15 years later, but there's no, there's no payment for that. If you can find someone to build you a whole new wastewater treatment plant and just deliver it to you, you may be, you may be okay with that. But I don't know if that, again, that might be, I mean, we joke, but that is one of the big, that is one of the big things. There may be some way of doing that. So the, yeah, you have very strict regulations about how you do projects and borrowing. So the thing that has been a problem in the past is with some of those handoff deals, if you look at them, and you look at them, and they say, and it looks kind of like you just built the facility, but instead of borrowing the money yourself, you have a private entity build it, and then you're paying them monthly or yearly lease, and then they're handing it over to you. If it starts to look pretty much like how you would have done it construction yourself, like really close to how you would have done it, but the advantage was the procurement and going fast, you're going to get trouble. Because we didn't have that ability in the past, that you couldn't circumvent kind of the public procurement bidding process by working with a private sector. So, I mean, that's, procurement and how these facilities get built and designed, that is what a lot of people are talking about when they talk about these public-private partnerships, because there's some creativity, there's some synergy between using the same designer and operator, there's some, you know, you can decide if you are going to be the person running it, you can make those decisions in how you actually build it. So there's a lot, a lot of excitement, some people feel that public procurement slows things down. You know, if you're going to do something innovative, and you know there's only one group that you really have faith that can do something innovative, going through the procurement that's really set up for, you know, to fit all the different public construction projects, not a very sophisticated state-of-the-art kind of unique wastewater facility. That's why a lot of people look at the public-private partnership, frankly, is that you can actually do things faster or with people that you might have more confidence in if you're just asking for a low bid. Believe me, as a public works director that inherited a low bid water treatment that was closed based on a catastrophic accident when I arrived at Chatham-Killing, there is something to be said for kind of that level of, you know, picking who you want and that kind of stuff. So, I mean, I'm going on about this, but I think you will find this public-private partnerships, the advantages that people are really touting are more about some of the creativity, speed, risk control than just cost. If you're just looking to save tons of money, I, you know, I don't think the public-private partnership is going to make that much of a difference. And you could end up spending a lot on a publicly designed facility or a lot on a private-designed facility, there's other issues to look at. Let me just show you at least one or two slides I'm going on. Let me just show you one or two schematics from my colleague's presentation that outlines this new authority that you have, and I think you all understand a lot of them. So again, attention in the past, we've heard lots of talk every now and years for conferences of exciting public-private partnerships. I've gone back to North Carolina, gone to talk to some of my colleagues, my attorney colleagues, and they're just like, nope, can't do it here, nope, sorry, can't do it here. We really did not have some of the creativity that people were demanding or hoping for in other parts of the state. And as a result of that, I think there was some pushing, and a whole package of alternative contracting mechanisms got passed several years ago that specifically addressed this public-private and alternative construction delivery mechanism. It came in two or three years ago, we haven't seen lots of testing of them, probably because we haven't seen a tremendous amount of new facilities in this period of time due to recession. But we're now, you know, seeing things pick up strong. And, you know, I think that's all reason I was talking to Mr. Grisbeck. I think, you know, as I look at some of these options, you would certainly be an eligible candidate for them, whether you decided to do them or not, or go to some of the traditional options, that would be completely your choice. And what I did, did this, all of these slides, you have received the whole slide deck from my colleague, Norma Houston. She and I work a lot together, I work a lot with some other colleagues, but if you are ever getting, you know, really serious about that, she said she'd be happy to come, talk to you, work with your counsel attorneys and counsel staff to figure out what would have to be done for this. But these package of authorities, this is not the wastewater treatment plant, public-private partnership model, this is all public infrastructure. You very well may have other infrastructure coming that you want to use this. So some of what this is written for is as much for a parking garage as a wastewater treatment plant. But I continue to be struck by, and I work a lot with colleagues that work on the development finance arena, this package of kind of development finance tools plays really nicely for a wastewater treatment plant. And it's one of the, you know, it's one of the specific designated uses. But in any development, again, whether you're a parking garage or a wastewater treatment plant, you're going to need to have, figure out who's going to be responsible for these, for these different things. The question is, in the past, we had limited ability to mix and match some of the things out of this, out of different columns. With these new suite of tools, you can be creative for dealing with it. You still have to decide about this, but there's a lot of flexibility. Revenues, you can build a new asset now and decide, is it the town that's going to get the revenues, is it the, I'm just going to call it wastewater treatment plant developer, or is it some mix you share, revenue sharing? You can do some pretty creative things that would have been very difficult or impossible to do. So this is, for those of you who are reading statutes, this is the statutory language of where these exist, and there's a lot more written about how you could go about doing them. I'm going to focus on this last one. There were three new innovations in this package of legislation. The first two fall into the model that you all want to build the model that you all want to build this and operate it, it's just how you actually build it. And there's some, it's, it's important, and if you do go down with the side that you're going to want to build it, um, and operate it, the way you deal with construction, contractors and designers, you have some options here that you didn't have before. This is the one that is a full out, this third one over here, is the full out public-private partnership, where you can start mixing, um, you can start mixing financing and ownership. You can do those flips or those handoffs a lot easier, really under this agreement. So it could be that, you know, your preferred model, you might want to turn to this part of the statutes, just because it allows you to do what, you know, exactly what you do in Emory might work better, uh, here. So, um, these are just some of the background that you have. This one's important, is that, um, the local government commission, I'm sure you're aware of, will approve any borrowing. They'll also get involved in something that they deem as a long-term lease. So, so you're not going to get out of, you know, if somebody else says they're going to build it, and you're going to pay them $300,000 a year for 20 years, and then take ownership over it, it might not look like you built it and owned it, but it does look like you built it and owned it. Because it looks kind of just like here, again. You're just doing a creative financing, and our local government commission doesn't, they, they want to be involved in creative financing. They're not going to, you're still going to have to go through, that's important from a client standpoint, you're going to have to go through, uh, through them. The complete private option, the local government commission doesn't get involved at all. They don't care if it's just a, you know, if it's just a private developer builds a wastewater treatment plant, and then you guys decide to pick an amount per thousand gallons, at least where you sent them, the local government commission will not get involved in that. So, I, this is the steps that go, that go through, and I'm not going to go through every one of these, but you basically say there's a need for the project, you publish, uh, requests for qualifications. The, in this particular case, the way it would work is you say that, kind of what you're doing now, you have a presentation with by Mr. Baldwin, say this is what we want. We want parties that could be, a developer could get us a wastewater treatment plant using their own expertise, to submit to us how they would do it, and what, what their experience is, and just some things about them. You would select the best qualified developer. Someone's done 10 of these, you can say someone's done 10 of these facilities already, you've visited them, you like them, and that could be one of your criteria. You have a little bit more, or a lot more procurement than the typical construction project, where you just have to go a little bit. And that's, you know, that's, 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 again, the option that you're buying with this type of partnership. A lot of negotiation that you would develop, uh, how you're going to work with them. The construction part of the project, um, you can actually decide with the developer, if you know of one person, or one firm, and you really want to build this facility, you can sole source to them, which is a huge variation of anything else. We don't have that kind of authority for any other way of the public being actively involved in the wastewater treatment plant. So, you can do that, as long as you require that the, that the contractors and the designers build it at a reasonable cost. I think that's the, the word in the language. But it gives you a lot of ability. So your, your, your time for picking is when you pick your partners to help you shepherd this whole thing. You can just see, there's some steps here. This is some of the things that you have to ask for a developer. You know, so you, you know, you have to have evidence that they could pay for the, you know, pay for the project, deal with cash flow issues, experience with similar projects, so, things that you would expect. This is probably the most important slide for you. You could have, instead of development agreement, this could be, you know, new wastewater treatment plant agreement. Property interests of unit and developer, that means who's going to own the facility, is that going to change with time? That's where you, that's where you might say, the private entity is going to own it for the first 10 years, public entity 10 years after that. You can, you can deal with those types of variations. You know, development responsibilities, you know, all I can, talk about land acquisition, permits, all of those different things can be, can be, can be split. Financing obligations are, are a key non. In this model, one of the catches is, you can't use this model just because you want a developer that knows a contractor, that has really good contracting skills, you want to have them to screw up and build your plant. Under this model, the developer has to bring at least 50% of the financing cost. And one of the things that we're trying to figure out, the school, is it, it's not particularly clear, but that financing obligation means exactly. You know, is that if the thing's going to cost $4 million, they bring in $2 million and $1? Is it, is it mean that they borrow $2 million and $1, and you borrow, you know, $1, you know, $1,999? We have to figure out exactly what that means. But, the idea would be, it's not all going to be unhooked for the, for you. And it, it has to be at least, at least that. If you say that you want the developer to do 100% of it, you can start to see how this would get you to the, you know, the option that's talked about, you could just say, you know, we want you to do everything, we, we want to have light touch for the first 10, 15, 20 years, and then you can start bringing that, if that makes sense to folks. So, this is stuff that is included, that you have to, that you have to work on. These are just things that you could add to it. You know, and again, this is where you get some of the control issues, this is, you're going to want to say, particularly if you give the, the developer, the private entity a lot of control, and you're building a customer, you may want to say, you know, that you don't expand at a certain rate, or you always need to gain a certain amount of capacity. These are complicated, I tried, I've burned, it's late at night, I've tried to make these as simple as possible. These are pretty complicated, uh, contracting mechanisms. But, hopefully you see as many possibilities as we have seen when we see this. So this, I just wanted you to know that this is out there. It just makes one more tool in your toolbox. I think if you do want to do, um, some type of flip, th- this would be probably better. If you, if you're more interested in just a long-term, or you don't want to be in the business at all, I'm not sure using this mechanism is worth the effort. In other words, if you want to just have, if you really want somebody else to take care of the treatment, and you just want to focus your efforts on the collection side of things, I'm not sure if this brings much to... Mr. Grisbeck asked me, give kind of, just end with a kind, you know, kind of got feelings of, just to steer you in directions, or tell you kind of how things have shaped up. And I'll tell you, the, the, I, I've seen a lot of unhappy people with this contract mechanism, not with private entities, but with, oh, actually, could you go to the other one? I'll show you that. So, option number two, the big, the, the big issue is managing risk and, and figuring out a well-understood financial plan moving forward. It's hard to predict, uh, construction costs. I mean, engineers try it all the time, and some are better than others, they're kind of predicting the initial capital cost, but that's a big risky point for you. So if you can't stomach, like, you know, you have an estimate that it's going to be, I have no idea the prices of these types of facilities, but, you know, if an $8 million facility, and that's what you budget for, and it comes in at 15 or 16 million, then having one of these procurement methods where you, you know, you cap it, and they, you know, you cap it, and they just have to be responsible for eating any kind of excess cost, you know, you could do that. But what's been happening is, that's been one risk, of people ending up spending a lot more on the facility than they expected. The other risk, which has been just as hurtful to utilities, has been the capacity, you know, it doesn't work like the field of dreams, they build it and they don't come. And that one's a really tough one. And, and I'm, I'm thinking that if you have, you have three parties involved in this effort, and I think you can do it, and I think you could do it quite well to have this preferred method, but you're going to have to be very careful with thinking about the three parties. Thinking about the developer, who's really driving the actual ultimate demands, you as the middle person, that are, you know, collecting the waste and sending it to the wastewater treatment plant, and then the wastewater operator. And I could envision, you know, worst-case scenarios, where the development didn't come as fast as it was planned, but your contract with the wholesaler had like a ramp-up agreement, where they gave you a really good price, they gave you, you know, $2,000,000 or $3,000,000 for treatment, but then they said, but the only way we can do this is that if you, you know, you guarantee that you send us this much wastewater this year, next year, and the year after. That's a pretty common type of agreement. Those are the kind of agreements that you've got to be really careful with, because we now have five years of evidence where a lot of those people's targets were not made. So we end up with, um, we end up with people ending up to have to pay off debt. The banks don't give you a break if you're selling less water, or you're pulling in less wastewater. Whether it's your banks, or the developer's banks, somebody pays $10 million for a facility, they're going to start getting, uh, principal and interest payments right away. And, and so, those are the things I'm most concerned about, uh, for you. If you don't want to be in that position, I think if you, if you had the developer at the table, um, you, you could pull yourself back and really be just a middle person, you know, with, if that makes sense, of that, if you really didn't want to get into that, that either construction cost risk, or the risk of selling too much or too little, then, then option two may be a good place for you. If you, because there's some risk of building your own facility, because, you know, unless you, unless you have some magical way of knowing exactly, um, how much, kind of, you could, if you built your own risk facility completely, you could have, I suppose you could have some developer agreements. So it's the, I mean, the other side of that though, because someone, like you said, or someone's going to assume risk with. So, I mean, what's the trade-off? When we get out of the risk business, what? Well, the trade-off is that control, is that, you know, certainly the control and the ability to have, like, the excess capacity to overset, you know, oversize a plant for your own needs. You can build that into an agreement, um, but that, you know, you're going to, you're going to lose a lot of, uh, control unless you make that part of your agreement. And the control issues that people, um, so the, the two types of unhappy partners that I see most are people that are stuck paying a lot more than they expected because of, uh, demand didn't come. And then the other folks are, um, demand did come, and they want to expand, they want to expand into a, a new area, and developer says, sure, but you want to serve two neighborhoods, I'm not going to touch my wastewater treatment plant to expand it for two neighborhoods, but I will expand it to serve 30 neighborhoods. The only reason, the only way I'll do that is if you carry the load for the first five, 10 years. So, we see, we see, we see small local governments that feel like, you know, that they, they can't, they can't justify that expansion. So, now, the flip side of it, of you taking over the business completely, rolling it in, putting it part of your utility, you can spread costs over folks in this part of town. But that fits into the criteria of whether you can sell that or not. Most utilities that have cheaper rates spread costs over larger customer areas. So, ultimately, I think you mentioned the economies of scale are in your favor, um, it's just, that can be a hard sell for folks. So, I mean, that's the, that's the, but I, I, you know, I, I was trying to think of how far I could go. I mean, honestly, I, we were joking about, you know, school of government, I'll come and I'll say it all depends. It does all depend. I, I can't, I can't tell you one or another. I can tell you, I can tell you though, about the, the middle, the middle person, is that you, you don't want to be stuck without a lot of due diligence between two business people. You know, and, and unless you've really thought it through. If you thought it through, you can tap into the advantage of both of those. Uh, because you know, I mean, everybody wants to win-win-win for this, but that's the one area, and I don't, now, you know, some of you are business people in your other life, I don't want to begrudge business people at all. But if you have contracts that have not been well thought out, and you have a wholesaler, this larger utility owner that is paying off debt, they're going to go into it expecting a certain rate of return. And if you haven't thought through that, so, I, I, I think what I'm saying is, that middle ground, that, you know, that option number two, you're just going to have to run a number of different scenarios into the future, just to make sure you're covered. They're, they're basic scenarios, and, but I think I'm a little jaded, because a lot of local governments haven't done them. You know, the basic scenarios are, growth comes, um, a quarter's of what has been promoted, or 10% slower than what is promoted. You know, we never would have thought that six or seven years ago. Now there's lots of examples of those worst-case scenarios. So if you do those worst-case scenarios, I think you can see your range. But, if you don't do those worst-case scenarios, and there's just one option, you're going to have to look really carefully about it.
Jeff, what, what do you know about the Sanford bottom? I know they just completed a fairly large expansion, right? You know, sort of in the bottom part of the recession, and, uh, do you know much about there, how they, how they financed that plant?
Well, Sanford, Sanford's interesting, and what I know about Sanford is that, you know, it used to be two utilities, Sanford and Lee, Lee County. They have a pretty complicated arrangement for Lee County to have transferred over their assets to Sanford. And I don't know all of the nuance of that, but they did spread their customer base, and, you know, so they are becoming a larger utility with the ability to spread financing over larger numbers of customers. The specifics of their financing, you know, unless they did something I'm not aware of, they, most water treatment plants are financed with revenue bonds these days. And that would be, I don't know if you've used revenue bonds to finance in the past, but, um, it's probably a separate presentation. If you decide to go, you know, to government ownership and government financing, um, the financing options you have are, are limited, but interesting. The revenue bonds, general obligation bonds.
Yeah, because of our small size, you know, I've made a trip to the local government commission, and they, they treated me nicely, but they sort of patted me on the head and sent me on the way. Isn't he cute? He thinks he can borrow $30 million to build a sewer plant?
Well, I, that's a really important point, and that's probably one that, that I need to add to the first slide, is that access to capital. If that is, if that is your situation, and I, I didn't locate all of your outstanding debt, um, then, then that is certainly a reason that we're seeing, uh, public-private partnerships, is the, the access to capital. I will say, again, from a risk standpoint, if, if you aren't seen as credit-worthy because of your situation, the local government commission's pretty good at judging it credit-worthy. It's not that you're not credit-worthy, but you would just carry a bigger risk. Chances are, a private entity coming to serve you would, would price some of that risk in their financing. So, um, you do have to be, there's no, there's no magic sheet money, you know, but, but if the LTC says they will not approve a new loan for you, then that is a criteria that, and first off, you're not going to be able to do something that looks like a loan, because they're going to be watching it very closely. That is going to, that's going to steer you to one of these other models.
Have you seen any examples out there where a small town, like a small municipal like us, you know, we talked about public-private partnerships, but what about a public, public-private where a county gets some skin in the game?
Oh, oh, sure. Now, those are, those are, those, that's, that's what I was, that number, you know, it's a version of number two. That, those are very, very, very common. What do you understand? And, someone just- Someone just built a new water treatment plant as a, I don't know if you guys were on that, but there, there's a couple of examples of counties and cities going in together on new facilities, and either doing it through inter-local agreement or doing it through the creation of authority. And you have the ability in North Carolina to do either one. You can do, you know, it doesn't take a lot of creativity to look at a map and see all the different local governments, you know, that are around here between a couple counties, a couple cities, you know, those, you could, under North Carolina statute, you could form a new unit of government of authority and just be in charge of the, of the treatment facility. You know, I think a lot of these options are getting looked at in the Jordanite partnership, I think.
Yes.
You know, from, on the water side. You, you know, that's, that's a way to pool, pool risk. There tends to be, again, to give you just a little bit more pushing, you know, into this, but I think there tends to be a feeling that, that asset ownership that, and financing in general, but maybe not in your case with your outstanding debt, is, that's an area that governments do pretty well, the asset ownership and financing, just because of your tax-exempt financing abilities. But the procurement and the operation and the making integrated design decisions and dealing with complicated design, there's high evidence that profit-related private sector innovation, you know, can do quite well at that. So a partnership that kind of looks at your ability to borrow a line, you know, that's why I like the public-private partnerships, because if you are creditworthy, local governments can now get funds cheaper than they've been able to get funds in my whole career. I mean, it's, it's very good market for, now, privates can get funds like that, too, but not quite as, quite as good. So, you know, that, that's the, that. But I, I can't, you know, I can't tell you, you know, you're only going to be happy if you go, you go two. One is unusual. I think one would be, you'd be kind of an outlier, and I think you'd have to make a lot of things work for one, but you could still, you could still do one. I think option two, where it's just this, you know, government ownership and private operation, you know, I think you could end up with pretty much the same risk profile of either of these, if the way you designed a contract between, you know, if you wanted to work with the private sector, you know, but this, if you, if you have trouble with accessing capital, then the government, the government ownership is going to be challenging for you. The public financing programs that are out there, we do have some good ones, but the state, the big state one doesn't fund new construction like this. The SRAF wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to do any wastewater treatment plants like this. USDA would fund, would, you know, would fund a project like this, and you're, I don't know, until you, you know, this project becomes a reality, you're, I think you qualify for USDA funding, and then they don't, they can only lend money to you if you are not creditworthy. But the LGC still has to approve their loans, too, so.
Yeah, we chased a USDA loan several years ago for a couple of years, the application had built at least one four-inch hearing binder, and still didn't make them happy, but that's, that's, that's a tough, tough path to take.
The, now, I don't know what time, you know, what your timeframe is here, but there are, there are, even at the national level, some provisions for helping public-private partnership. The president's, one of the president's budget recommendations was to create a finance pool specifically designed at your situation, I don't know if it's going to go anywhere, but that, but that, that one allows for private financing, but maintains an underlying home ownership. It would look, it would look a lot like, you know, the approach. So, the other, I, I wouldn't, you know, I know you talked, and I give it a lot, a lot of options, I, I know it comes with a lot of decisions, but you really have more tools in the toolbox than any other local government board, I mean, with this new, with these new options, ha-ha, in the past. And the fact that you're looking at these creative designs, it's, I mean, it's a pretty exciting project. I, you know, I think that, that I'll have to make the final decisions.
Any questions for Jeff?
He sounds, he sounds like he's at the end.
No, no, I, I can talk about this all, all night. I tend to worry more about the people listening to me being at the end, and I, no, I'm really happy to, to keep going, but I just don't want to, I mean, I can, I can answer more questions if I can go into this. Certainly can talk more about your financing options if you do, you know, or want to know more about that.
Well, let me just share with you, and you might already know from talking to Brian, what you do know, because we've been working with you on that, Nancy's been working with you on rate setting, with respect to our credit-worthy guests, you know, we've, we were stunned pretty badly by the Townsends closure four years ago, and our utility operation started opening up in the red ink and relying on the fund balance very heavily for the first year, and the second year, and third year, fourth year, I've lost track of whether it was the fourth or fifth year of that now. But one problem around our creditworthiness is getting our utility system back on a, back into the black ink, paying for itself. And, you know, I don't know, I don't know if you can, I appreciate that you're, you're trying to help us do that, and I think that's the first important step to fix it, at least put a bandaid on the creditworthiness problem. We're always going to have a problem with the fact that we're so small, you know what I mean? If your total budget's under $3 million, your ability to make million-dollar-a-year payments is, is just not there.
Well, when you do, when you do get further along, there's really, you know, there's four parties in all of these different scenarios, and, you know, certainly we're talking utility and their finances, but you, with that, with option, you know, with option number two, you're going, you're going to have this operator, who's obviously going to have the town, you're going to have the developer, and you're going to have customers, and long-term customers. And again, there's, all of those groups of parties provide some opportunities, and they also provide complications. I mean, there are financing mechanisms that you can use if you, if the rates themselves generate the greater return that you need for this project. The town of Hillsborough just did a very interesting project last year. It was for about an $8 million, I think it was in that range, multi-use development that included streets and sewer lines and roads. It didn't have a sewer facility, but it included utility lines. And the way that, the entire way that was financed, the town of Hillsborough, which has fairly expensive rates, too, probably not too different than your situation, the way they financed that was a very creative way. They used another new authority that local governments have to use property assessments to finance infrastructure, and they put actual property assessments on benefited land, you know, means, property assessments, and they used that as revenue to issue a bond. And the bond came with a fairly high interest rate because it was seen as new and somewhat risky, but I thought that was a really creative approach of, you know, and with, with the amount and the value of the property, it could be something that we could look at for you, or you could, you know, ask, ask your attorney to look at. There's only been one of these, one of these assessment, infrastructure financing done, but Mooresville, not Mooresville, but Mooresville is about to do another one. So it's an interesting, an interesting model to use assessments, where you actually are getting, you know, the properties that are going to benefit from this to pay it back. So you kind of short-circuit the, you know, some of the, the rate set. There's no, you know, there's always going to be somebody's going to have to pay, in this particular case, you would, you know, jump right to that, you know, underlying property.
And the idea is always to spread the cost out over time so that the ultimate user pays when they show up, and then, of course, they, if they build it and they will come, thing, doesn't, you know, doesn't work out, then spreading that cost is not an option that...
Well, that's the hard, that's the hardest thing with these, these facilities, is that the first few years, you know, you have, you have very low revenue stream coming in. So, again, but there are, either for you or for developers, probably easier for developers to design a, I mean, not developers, but private entity, to design some type of financing system on the back end that mirrored a little bit better the revenue stream, you know, so in other words, they were paying less principal and interest in the first couple of years. Our, our local government commission, you know, we're not big on balloon payment loans for local governments. So you are stuck with, you know, that. So that would be a, you know, that's another advantage, I think, of probably a private utility where they can, you know, they can do some financial engineering that you probably wouldn't have.
Well, unfortunately for Jeff, he lives really close to us. I've already bugged him in his office a couple of times, but, so, as we move forward, and I'm sure there, there will be other issues, other things that come up from time to time, that we'll be, we'll be willing to, to him again, but I know, for me personally, at least getting, getting my feet on the ground with this, this set of statutes in the state of North Carolina, he's been a big help to me at this point, and probably offered more ideas than, than anything. And I think we have quite a few solutions out there. It, it, it all comes back to a couple of philosophical questions for us in terms of how much, how much risk we want to tolerate and how, how much involvement we want to be directly and solely in the utility ownership and operation issue. And so, and there again, going back to Mr. Bolton's map, some of these things could happen sooner than others, and that may dictate other possible development arrangements and development agreements. And so, there's no easy answer, no easy solution to all of this. I think some of our more expensive things, we're going to be leaning back on more of the basic model, but a couple of them may have slightly easier and more nimble solutions. I think, I think, I think, again, all we wanted to do was give you an impression of what it is we're dealing with at this point, get you chewing out a little bit. From a staff perspective, we're going to be talking to the developer a little bit more and trying to get a feel for where, where and how they're coming in with some of their proposals. And once we have a more firm idea of what, what the physical environment of their development would look like, then I think that's going to help kind of determine what some of our more harder proposals are going to be. And that's where we're going to have to answer some tough questions at that point. I think philosophically, you know, if we're getting, if we're heading in the right direction here, that's really up to you guys to say, you might need a little bit of time to digest this. But there's more to talk, one way or another.
I don't know if, there's two sets of presentation slides. I think I've only got...
Yeah, I, this other one was, I can, I'll send it to...
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
I will add access to capital for the criteria, because that is a, that's a pretty important, this, this criteria. I think, you know, access to capital, given, given, then you can, you will have to fill out the margin. If you can't show the ability to pay back debt, the local government commission, that's going to be a big criteria you're going to want to consider.
Yeah, and right now, we can't even show the recovery operating costs, so it's, if we can get, you know, you pass that, we're still, you can cut a break there, but...
Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Lot to think about.
Thanks for, you know, several years of, of, and I'll see you later. We were helping to be back when I was the manager, and Brian's, has already stated his appreciation for what you and your folks do up there, and how lucky you are to have close proximity to USC, and, so thanks for all of that.
Happy, happy to.